Is that what's saying to you still?
I don't know.
I bet he forgot about it. But he didn't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
He didn't sign them.
All right, appreciate it, thank you. All right. Hey Chris, you want to start that back there?
No.
It's there you go.
Yeah.
Do you have to push stuff over there?
What's that?
Do you have to push stuff over there?
No, it's all yours.
Sorry.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to call this public hearing a roll call. Mary Jane Thomas?
Here.
Joe Bartle?
Here.
Rick Van Winkle?
Here.
Dallas Abrams?
Absolutely.
Earl Mullins?
Here.
Jean Davis?
Yes.
The purpose of this meeting is to implement from the citizens of New Paris on projects that they would like to see done in our community, pertaining to our streets and curb sidewalks, that sort of thing. And we'll tell them that we do have our grant for the rest of Main, or Washington Street, which will be from Ham's Diner to Federico's and from Walnut Street to the American Union. We've also put in to, our final forage grant, to do the first block of Main Street from Washington to High, right? And we've also looking at doing Shady Lane, Holly Hills Road, and can't think the street. Rick, what's the street?
Cardinal Hill.
Cardinal Hill, there we go. This is what we're looking at also. So, this time, I'd like to open it up to the public and let me hear from you on any projects that you would like to see done.
I live at 303 South Spring Street. And in front of my house, what you guys did from Pearl down towards Federico's, you did sidewalks and curbs on that side. And the ones on the west side of the street, they're in decent condition. But from my house up to Cherry Street, water actually comes off the road and goes on to my property. And then, well, Chris, I understand, up to that, on the north and south area, there's no sidewalk at all, it's virtually grown over. And in front of my house and the neighbors two north of me, there's no curb at all. It's submerged in the pavement. And if you get that replaced, new curb and sidewalk, I paid money, over $10,000 last summer to my house, and about another seven the summer before. Now, I'd like to redo my retaining wall, sidewalk did get done, and see if we can have driveway pin in approximately 11 by 50, on the north side of the house between me and my neighbor to the north side. I had one of the neighbors with me, the other one should be showing up here just a little bit. I have pictures where the water goes from the road just onto my property towards not, you know, veered towards any way from curbing and stuff. Didn't know if there's anything that we can do with that.
What is your address?
303 South Spring.
303 South Spring.
Block 301.
It is a block, so perhaps.
Oh, five, six, three years ago.
I know when we did that project and it paid him down, and we had some opportunity to do the painting, but we didn't have enough money to do the side.
Yeah.
And that still isn't consideration.
Which, south of the alley, you know, which is Beech, not Beech, is Burge's old house and probably these still have a curb and they have cement sidewalks, we still have brick sidewalks. It still has a long, some curb, oh, you can see the top of it.
Me and Eric agree, then we'll redo the brick.
Which I've stumped these, stumped these around, but I've kind of held still until I did next year projects on my house. The last two years I've worked inside this year, bike pit and driveway, and redo my retaining wall with center block, and, you know, see if we can get some new curb and stuff, you know, put outside for us.
You know, just for property value, because we can't even get out far enough to get to the sidewalk without walking two blocks of the water.
Right, I agree.
You know, it kind of hits them around between the sidewalk and the road, it's kind of like a low spot.
Okay, but that's the reason that we're here.
Yeah, I understand.
To find that exactly, you know, in a way that we can do a phosphor grant to give what we need to do.
Yeah, I understand.
And then, that's one of the pay, that's a project to like to see done.
There would be a stump removal at his place, and I would price to get my tree down, so.
So it don't do any damage to a new sidewalk, you know.
Right.
Isn't that between Main and Cherry, is that where you live?
No, it's between Rin and Cherry.
Rin and Cherry.
Yeah, on the east side of the street. What else?
Come on.
Anybody else? Joe?
Well, in consideration, you've got the Washington Street project pretty well for the rent fund for that. I'd like to see if it would be possible to include off-street parking as it is past the con, like Ham's Diner and stuff on the east side of the street, from Federico's up. If that could be widened, it's wide enough now, but one of the new sidewalks that I put in, so the grass is banking allowed for the sidewalks, so they can be off-street parking across from the banks. Parking down there is very limited.
Across from the, across the bank through there?
I would say that the right-of-way down through there, I would say that is probably going to be kind of slated to be done. Because that three-foot of grass area, there's not going to give enough parking without intruding down on the state highway of 1-320 there.
About the same width as this, just across the natural spring.
Pardon me?
They've got the off-street parking just past natural springs.
Actually, there's an offset in the road there that's quite a bit more.
Isn't that much wider?
Quite a bit more offset there than what you have up there on that end of the town as far as being out of danger of the traffic coming down through there. I don't think right off the top of my head that we could look at it, but I'm going to say right off the top of my head that that's probably not possible.
Sure would be a good thing.
And I understand.
If I remember right, I think when we did that block, where we did the widening, we got some plans from ODOT, who's in Schiphol, Key Engineering, and I think the right-of-way width of 320 changes on the other side of the bridge. I can double-check that, but if I remember right, I think there was a change in what actual right-of-way width of the state highway is. That kind of limits, the village has to work within those right-of-way limits that ODOT already have, and I think that it narrowed in there. I can double-check that in my files.
Best I remember, even if we took out that grassy area and put a sidewalk in the street, then we would have to infringe on to property owners, property order, to make that width possible for safety, parking of vehicles down through there, and then that's a whole new can of mess. So I have to, we will look at that, Joe, but off the top of my head, the best I remember that when we dealt with that a few years ago, that's probably not possible.
Appreciate you listening, Bill. Is there anybody else?
No, my property, where I just parked aside, you know, that new pavement, I mean, is there going to be curbs on each side of that there? Or will it be, you know, like, curved, curved on each side of my blacktop? And, I mean, are they going to follow down my blacktop and pour the sidewalk right up to the level, or?
Well, that's right, our engineers right behind us.
According to the list, you got to help me.
Right, so, Joe, we have some.
That vacant five acres, Susan, there that.
Does it have a, it's paved regularly now.
Yes, yeah.
Basically, what we'll do, we'll come in and there and we'll just, there'll be some milling done down there, we'll actually mill this new street up and kind of do some repaving after we've put in a new curb. And that'll just kind of, the curb will just kind of either angle in and around, or it'll dive down right there.
I agree, it's actually the same.
Yeah, we're not going to change the width, right? No, that one won't change.
Sadly. You know, will the concrete done the sidewalk from the east side of the sidewalk too, just here, or will they go and put the blacktop in there?
Probably what will happen is the sidewalk will come down, and then it'll just kind of come down and meet up with your pavement, it'll kind of dive down there, and then we won't really have any sidewalk across, because that's such a light right-of-way. You know, then on the other side, probably, and the fence.
So there won't be going across my sidewalk?
No, no, we won't.
Is there anybody else?
How do you determine whether you have enough money to have funding up on, you know, how we state, you know, stuff we'd like to see done? How do you guys determine, you know, where that falls into role on getting done and having funds to do it? How does that, you know, does that fall out? I've never been to one of these meetings, but Susan, would you like to answer?
Yeah, I'm telling you, in fact, in 2009, I'll put a couple hours of this up here if you'd like people to peek in. The village did what was called a community survey, and we put out, they were actually like a bright yellow paper that was sent out to everybody in the community, I think it was in the New Paris community at that time, not in the New Paris. And asked everybody, and Ray had a number of projects in it, and we asked you to rate the projects based on what you thought the importance was for the community. And the projects consisted of finishing Holly Mills, Shady Lane, Cardinal Hill, improvements on Main Street from Washington to Spring Street, New Paris and Gitchford Road Utility Extension, a utility extension that brought 40 to kind of open up economically, we all went down that way, Lincoln Lane improvements, Englishwood addition improvement to the Kemper-Nelson area, Spring Street improvements, which is kind of down where you're at, and then Walnut Street improvements, which would have been on that side. And when we did the last section of Washington Street, we were able to actually do some of the Spring Street improvements, which we paved down in front of the countryside down that way, then we also finished paving Walnut Street. So we kind of had some extra funds, and we tried to finish up some existing projects that we started, because down that end of Spring Street, we didn't have to have curb and sidewalk, we just did paving. It was a little better fit for where our project was at the time, because we had paving left at the time we were to that point. So basically, what we did was we kind of, the council kind of came up with some projects, and they kind of wanted the residents to say, "What do you think?" And they basically ranked those, and then we also had a section where people could write in what they wanted to see happen. And we had coves on Maple Street, we had replant trees, enforce ordinance on disabled cars, Alice had big holes, we need playground, improvements on north and south Washington Street, which is what we have the money for now, annexed land north of the ball dimes, so just a number of different, a variety of things that really weren't necessarily infrastructure-related. So I think the village is looking for input from you guys as to what you think they should do, that's why we have these public hearings, and I'm like really excited people showed up, because a lot of times we don't have anybody to show up, so I'm like really excited. And by you telling them what it is you want, then those projects kind of get on this list, and as they continue to try to apply for grant money, and they're probably one of the most proactive councils that I work with, because they always apply every year, whether they get funded or not, they always apply, and they just keep trying to work on different projects. And I think if many of you have lived in New Paris very long, you can see there's been an awful lot, we've heard that there's been over a million dollars of grant money that's come into this town just over the last million years. And it's because they were proactive enough to go after it. So I think, you know, your being here and telling them what you want kind of puts that on their slate, so that they can start putting those things kind of in priority, so that as great opportunities come up, they can start putting those in. A lot of times, we do it based on, where I kind of give them recommendations about what the projects are and what different funding programs they fit in the best. The program that we use over Washington Street, there's a lot of emphasis on how much traffic there is on that street, there's emphasis on whether there's widening, it has to do with how you score to compete with everybody else. The money that we used on Spring Street and Melon Lane, it's more based on low-income households, has nothing to do with traffic. You know, stuff that you're talking about probably more fit towards, you know, CBG money than what it is the other applications that we put in. So it's about trying to take your project and fit it with what different programs are available, with that, with that project, which is best suited, is that what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, at least, it's sort of, you guys come out with a new one of these for this year, or is this?
We basically reused the 2009 survey, because when we applied my money in 2009 for Shady Lane project, there was like a county competition, and at the time, grass was chosen, we were not. And so, the village decided that since the survey really wasn't that old, they weren't going to redo the survey in particular years. That money can only be applied for every two years. Unfortunately, because New Paris has gotten it three times, which is equal $900,000 over those three different projects, sometimes they're kind of at the bottom of the list, because people feel like they've gotten a period check and change, because they were in the right place at the right time, and this council made a lot of really good decisions to help the people of New Paris, but now we're kind of filling the front up a little bit, because they're kind of saying, "Well, you've already got three of these," you know, so we kind of want to spread it around. But that doesn't stop this group from applying, it doesn't stop them from being proactive, it doesn't stop them from still going after the money, you know, and I think you need to give them all credit, so.
Okay.
Second question.
Yeah, how would we know if it did or didn't get?
The applications are due to the Preble County Commissioners on Friday, April 1. On May, the 4th, there will be a public hearing at the county commissioner's office at 2:00 in the afternoon, at which time, projects will be presented to the commissioners, and anybody that's there can say anything they want. If there's residents from New Paris that would like to, you know, say something about New Paris and support their application, you're more than welcome to be there. And then usually by the end of May, we have some idea whether or not we're going to be funded on the local level, and then the bigger project that we're submitting, which is the Shady Lane project, we probably will know whether or not we're going to compete statewide for that. It's kind of like a two-step process for that.
Okay.
Here's some other copies of this, so you can bring them to us later.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, I'm just saying a guess. On my property, when I do a new shop, I don't know what kind of timeframe where I'm going to have to redo the sidewalks, but I don't want to go on either side of my lane to step out my lawn and sewer to the street, and I don't want to do that after they put the new sidewalks.
You need to do it before the summer of 2012.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be different.
Okay. Well, if you have something like that.
Yeah, that would be nice.
I think, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we dig it up the next day.
I really don't want that.
Yeah, that's a good time.
We will, we would receive our money, or the agreement to get the money through somewhere around in July, and July being so late in the year, by the time we put the bids out, which could, you know, 30 days and advertise it, and the last thing we want to do is do construction in the cold weather, so that's the reason we're probably looking at, even though we will be funded this year, we are looking at 2012, before the project's actually done, so we can do it through the summer months.
A lot of times, too, it's more advantageous for the community to put this project out for bids in the wintertime, because contractors are looking for work, and then all the summer they already have, which because the bid tends to be higher, and so, you know, a lot of times, you can't get as much work done, it's going to save a lot of money. We've always been able to time recruit well and have extra money, we'll be able to do extra things, and, you know, a lot of that has to do with the timing of bids, and so, that's kind of where we do it, the way we do it.
Is there anybody else? Rick? No?
Just let you know.
Okay. Susan, do you have anything else to say?
Only if there's anybody that has a signed, a sign-in sheet, I'll look up here for council, if you could sign that. This public hearing, as well as the sign-in sheet and all the comments that you've made, all go into our application packages, and so, just case we get that extra point at the state level on the big project that we're applying for. So, you know, if anybody has a letter you want to write, and wants to submit to the village, and you can hit it 34 Friday, April 1, that would be great, because I would include it in the application, if you just want to say something about a project you'd like to be done, or, you know, support of what the village is doing, or anything like that that you want to put together. You can drop it off up through the drain, you know, anytime you want, she's here Monday through Thursday, or you can drop it off in the little water bill.
Like deposit box?
Yeah, deposit box, and that'd be fine, too, whatever, you know, it's to your consent, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess if there's nothing else, then I need a motion to adjourn from this public hearing.
I move.
Sorry. Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Jean Davis?
Yes.
And with that, I think I'm going to go ahead and start our regular monthly meeting. No?
Oh, God, no letters.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to have a turnout, we will get one, so probably go along with us.
Okay, this time, I'd like to call our regular monthly meeting a roll call. Mary Jane Thomas?
Here.
Joe Bartle?
Here.
Rick Van Winkle?
Here.
Dallas Abrams?
Here.
Earl Mullins?
Here.
Jean Davis?
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from the February meeting? Is there any change in their vision?
Oh, come on. I'm going to spread you out there, and I'll.
Go ahead.
Just throw the numbers out there, and I'll.
If there's no changes or additions, then I need a motion to accept the minutes from the February meeting. Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Jean Davis?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the warrants and payroll time sheets? Is there any questions on the warrants and payroll time sheets?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept those payroll time sheets.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Jean Davis?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from the February meeting? Is there any change in their vision?
Oh, come on. I'm going to spread you out there, and I'll.
Go ahead.
Just throw the numbers out there, and I'll.
If there's no changes or additions, then I need a motion to accept the minutes from the February meeting. Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the police fund, the monthly transfer of $7,100.
So moved.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Jean Davis?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the February entrance transfers.
Second.
You're second.
Second.
You're second. Okay, roll call. Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
And Jean Davis?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, the Hitman Foundation representative. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'm Bill Hudson, Sherri Shepherd.
Amen.
Thank you.
We're going around all the local government entities, we found out that a lot of the local governments aren't aware of some of the resources that you have within the county for affordable housing, specifically with our organization, so that's the reason we're here. If I could direct your attention to the right side of your packet, there's a set of the slides that we give with these presentations. There's 54 slides, but we're not going to go through all of them, we're going to keep this down to about 10 minutes, and I'll just direct you to the slides as we go through, and then later on, you can get more detail. Just go to the very first page, there, the Hit Foundation, HIT stands for Home is the, so Home is the Foundation, that's where the name comes from, it's not Hit Man or something like that, we get many comments about that. You see that bottom slide there, talks about the Hit Foundation history. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, was founded in 2003 by Mary Bull and Paul Olaf Personix. Mary's still very actively involved in the foundation, currently serves as president of our board of directors. The foundation was, actually initially started to address horrible housing needs, housing needs within Preble County. It was created just to be the voice of the people for affordable housing. I'd direct your attention to page two, very top slide there. This area starts talking about the Hit Foundation's vision, mission, and values, and really, the vision says, or really is our guiding, guiding line, our guiding force for the foundation, and that is that everyone in Preble County should have a decent place to live, and all of our programs are guided towards that, that we have. If you go to page number four, the bottom area there, we basically have four major programs within the Hit Foundation. The first program is we actually own and manage 26 units within Preble County that are dedicated to low-income individuals. Eighty-five percent of those units, we actually subsidize a portion or all their rent, for those people that receive subsidies, for some of them that can't pay any rent, doesn't mean they get a complete free ride, they're required to do community service work and those type of things to help, to help pay for their rent. We currently don't have any properties in New Paris right now, most of them are in Eden. We do have some grass in Camden as well. If you go to page number six, the bottom slide there, this is the next area of our foundation, and that is foreclosure prevention. There's two parts of foreclosure prevention that we have at the foundation. The first one being this section here, making homes affordable. Under this program, the foundation helps individuals that come in, and we actually even go outside of Preble County here, we service Preble County, Western Montgomery County, as well as we have clients from Dark County come to us. We negotiate with lenders to get reduced interest rates, to get loan modifications, if they have a bunch of back payments to do, to try to get that put at the end of the loan, so they become current and, you know, continue to stay in their house. We can help people even if they're within about 24 hours of a sheriff's sale. Many times, we can get that sheriff's sale stopped and get something going to try to help, to help these folks. You see a lot of these advertisements of places that people can go to to help with foreclosure prevention, a lot of them charge $500 to $2,000. We don't charge a client anything. This is through federal grant money that we're able to do this, and it's free of charge to the individual for that service. And with everything you see in the news these days, that department is very busy with everything going on in the economy. If you go to page nine, that area there is the second half of our foreclosure prevention program, and this is a new program called Restoring Stability. Under this program, we can actually assist the homeowner to help them out monetarily with foreclosure problems. There's about four different parts to that, there's a rescue payment assistance, where they can get a portion of their mortgage paid each month for up to 15 months, for up to a total of $15,000. The second area is, I'm sorry, that's actually partial, mortgage payment. Rescue payment assistance is when somebody's behind on their mortgage, and again, they can get up to, if they meet all qualifications, up to $15,000 to bring them up to date on their mortgage. The third area there is modification assistance, or principal and principal reduction, and under that program, they can get up to that amount of dollars to actually pay down their loan. The lender has to agree to do it one for one, so if the government, through these grant funds, they pay $5,000, then the lender would have to agree to reduce the mortgage by $5,000, just as an example, so that's it. That's another good program. The last program, under this program, is transitional assistance, and this is for the people that unfortunately, some people, they just can't stay in the home, they can't afford to continue, and they're just so far underwater for whatever reason. Under this, it actually helps give them money to be able to rent a new place, or to move, If you go to page nine, that area there is the second half of our foreclosure prevention program, and this is a new program called Restoring Stability. Under this program, we can actually assist the homeowner to help them out monetarily with foreclosure problems. There's about four different parts to that. There's a rescue payment assistance where they can get a portion of their mortgage paid each month for up to 15 months, for up to a total of $15,000. The second area is, I'm sorry, that's actually partial mortgage payment. Rescue payment assistance is when somebody's behind on their mortgage, and again, they can get up to, if they may owe qualifications, up to $15,000 to bring them up to date on their mortgage. Third area there is modification assistance or principal and principal reduction, and under that program, they can get up to that amount of dollars to actually pay down their loan. The lender has to agree to do it one for one, so if the government, through these grant funds, they pay $5,000, then the lender would have to agree to reduce the mortgage by $5,000, just as an example. So that's another good program. The last program, under this program, is transitional assistance, and this is for the people that unfortunately, some people, they just can't stay in the home, they can't afford to continue, and they're just so far underwater for whatever reason. Under this, it actually helps give them money to be able to rent a new place, or to move or do those type things. All the programs can actually be mixed up within that, within those four programs, to where individuals that can't go more than $15,000, so if they get $3,000 in one area and 12 in the other, they can do that, but they can't go for more than $15,000. Under that program, they don't have to pay the money back. There is a second mortgage that's placed on the home, though, and for the first five years, each year, 20% of that second mortgage is just really goes away. After five years, they don't owe anything. If they sell the house before five years, whatever prorated amount they would owe at that time would have to be paid out of proceeds, if there are proceeds, most of the time in situations like that, probably would be anyway for a second mortgage. Our third program that we have, if you go to page 13, and at the top of that page, it talks about HIT education programs. We do training that is related to housing and housing needs. Good neighbor, good tenant, just talks a little bit, helps both landlords and tenants how they should get along, what the laws are, those type things. Getting ahead and just getting by rural, that's primarily financially driven as far as helping people learn to buy into those type things. Financial fitness is very similar to that, and the details are in there, and I can go through all. The last one, the first three we're not currently offering, probably not till this fall, the last one, homebuyer education, we do offer that all the time, and under that program, it is a HUD-approved educational program, because many people, if they're getting such as subsidized USDA loan, they have to attend an eight-hour course, HUD-approved course, and so we have that for them. Anybody can go to it, it's good for anyone that's wanting to buy a home, but it is required for some loans. If we go to page 17, I'm sorry, page 16, this is the third area of the foundation, and this deals with USDA loan packaging, and this is the only area that the Hit Foundation actually does have a fee that's charged to the client. There's a $500 application fee that is charged. It is not charged, however, unless someone qualifies and actually closes on a home. If they come in and they don't qualify, there's no charge. If they come in and they qualify and they never find a home to buy, there's no charge. But if they actually qualify and they purchase a home, then there is a $500 fee that's paid out of the escrow account. This is a great program for basically low-to-meat-income individuals to be able to buy a home. It can reduce their interest rate down to, right now, somewhere around 2%, it changes all the time. They can also get a subsidy where a portion of their payment is paid through USDA, so it's really a good program. Under this program, we can do it for any rural area that's designated by USDA. All of Preble County is considered rural as far as they're concerned, so we do Dark County in that as well. The last area that we have, you'll find on page number 22, and that's in the administration of grants. At the top of that page, it talks about a shelter plus care grant that we are currently administering, actually in partnership with the Mental Health Recovery Board, and under that, an individual who is homeless, has a mental disability, or I'm sorry, a mental illness diagnosis and a disability, the disability could be mental or it could be physical, but as long as they meet those three requirements, and of course, they meet the income requirements, usually if they're homeless, they do, we can place them in a home up to five years and pay for up to their entire rental amount and a portion of their utilities, or all their utilities in some cases. This, of course, is based on income, some only receive partial payments and those type things, but this is a good program. We had initially enough money for 10 people. We opened the program the first of December, and within a month, we replaced, filled all 10. We're relooking at the budget, it looks like we're going to be able to do a few more, and the Mental Health Recovery Board is going back to the state who manages this federal program and asking for additional vouchers, but we didn't realize the need that there was for mentally ill, that were homeless in Preble County, again, until this program started, so definitely a big need for there. The bottom of page 22, future, it says potential future grants. Actually, we do have one approved now, it's the Ohio Department of Development Housing Assistance, and under this grant, we're just awaiting funding, we should have funding next month, it'll be on a first-come, first-served basis, but we'll have $58,000 to help residents of Preble County who have home repair or handicap accessibility needs. It needs to be like a health and safety issue, if somebody doesn't have it for us, somebody doesn't have an access ramp in their handicap, those type things. Again, we'll be doing some announcements in the newspapers, publication, once the funding actually gets in, and again, it'll be set up on a first-come, first-served basis, and generally, these go fairly quickly, you know, people come in and sign up. The next page, page 23, at the top of that, we manage and administer the CHIP, or the Community Housing Improvement Program, grants for Preble County. The city of Eaton actually has their own grants, so basically, we cover everything in Preble County outside of the city of Eaton. We have written up a ready application process right now, so currently, we don't have funds, but we'll be doing the submission in April, and then usually, we know by September whether we're going to be getting the funds, so it won't be till the end of the year that we have those programs. But those programs, we serviced the 2009 grant, we serviced a lot of people, in fact, a fair amount here in New Paris under those programs. There's different things there, part of this home repair, where people, again, it's be a health and safety type issue, to get some repairs done to their homes. Second area is tenant-based rental assistance, where we can help people with up to a year's rent and utilities, again, based on income, and the next part of that is emergency assistance, somebody needs their fuel oil tank filled, or their gas propane tank, or they, it can actually help them with mortgage payments, actually, we can pay up to three months of either mortgage or rental payments if they're behind in those type of things. So it's a good program, and again, that's kind of on a first-come, first-served basis. Usually, that lasts a couple of months, though, the money on those doesn't run out quite that quickly. But again, kind of the reason we're here today is just so you can kind of see what some of the things that are available for your residents that are out there concerning housing. We brought some flyers and things that, you know, you can keep in your village offices if you have somebody that comes in and they're in need, that you can give them for a referral. Love this, any?
No.
Okay. She usually tells them what they've messed up. So anyway, again, I kind of breeze through that quickly, because I know you guys are on a tight agenda, and again, anything we can do, sit you on, you know, related to housing, please give us a call. We're seeing a lot of lead, that's something that we're seeing a lot with people, and a lot of kids are showing up with elevated lead levels, because a lot of people are doing restorations on homes, older homes, and so we have a guy that's, he's a lead-certified inspector, and, you know, we can help advise people on those types of things, so anything house-related, please give us a call, and that's what we're there for, so thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just lay it here on the desk. Yeah. That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, good night.
Next on the agenda would be Mrs. Skitch, Jeanie, it's all yours.
Thank you. I have for you this evening, two things. I have some numbers for the East Main Street project that we discussed at the last meeting, and maybe some passing along with it from the women. This is basically from Washington Street, East Main Street. We came out and we made it, there was some snow out there, so it was a little difficult to see some of what was going on, but I think we got the majority of it. We have approximately three coal shoots, and then we also have the basement entrances to the building that Earl's brother owns that we looked at. The plan is to basically replace the sidewalk and the curb, and then also to mill two and a half inches of street surface and put an intermediate course back down and then a surface course. The reason for that has to do with the fact that all the longer there were gas extensions or services that have replaced them, if you ever, Earl's probably already, there's a lot of little patches along there, which is going to be difficult to just try and only mill and just put some surface back on there, I think some of that's going to come through. So the idea is to do a two and a half inch mill, and then we'll do an intermediate course and a surface course. That makes it a little more expensive. The other thing that makes it a little more expensive is we're dealing with quite a bit more concrete sidewalk, because you're going from the building clear out to the curb, from where we had priced the east block, which really had residential sidewalk with the grass strip. We're also proposing to use the sidewalk on the north side from Washington Street down to that alley, all the way out to the curb. Right now, it's part of it's all the way out, and then there's a part that's got grass, but there's actually parking for the antique store there, so you have to walk through the grass. So we're proposing to basically make all of that park, or all that concrete go from the buildings out to the curb, and then once we get to that point, most of that concrete, except for a little bit of it, I think we're probably going to leave, because some of that sidewalk was relatively new down to this corner. We did stop in to talk with the gentleman in the antique store, because he has all that brick out there. We did talk to him about whether he'd be willing to remove the brick. We briefly talked about maybe doing some stamping of the concrete out there and maintain the look. When we actually looked at the cost, it was going to drive the cost up by about $5,000, and then the cost ended up being kind of high because of the different problems and this different, on the concrete that's there, so I ended up taking the stamping out altogether. So if he'd want to do some stamping, or you guys would want to do something different there, you know, we'd have to add that back in, or maybe he'd be willing to pay for it , or he's putting his bricks back, but obviously, right now, it's just concrete. So if he would decide he just wants his bricks back, then obviously, he wouldn't have as much concrete in there, or he decides to do something else when that time comes, we can kind of make it through that. But the cost was getting kind of expensive, so I tried to do what I could to kind of pare it down a little bit. Attached to that, then, is the resolution. The utility match is a little more than what the other end was, again, because of the street surface that we have there, as well as we've got $4,000 in there to try to deal with those coal shoots and that basement entrance. We did some coal shoots up in a community up in, I was Lafayette about a year ago, with a downtown project, and we had about $600 or $700 apiece, and filled those in, and, you know, put the concrete back in the room, so I put a thousand dollars in there, I think that that's plenty.
I actually have a question. There's a room down there where that chute is.
I know.
This half as big as this room.
Well, I talked to somebody, I don't even remember who it was now, we kind of talked about maybe we'll put some kind of plate in there, and just.
Start filling the gravel, it's going to run into the basement.
Well, we could put some kind of plate down in there, and it would just, it would just basically be like a ceiling at that point, and there wouldn't be no entrance in there anymore.
Right.
See what I'm saying? Versus trying, if you ever go, fill that all in, it'll build some kind of wall down there.
That's what I thought, you have to build some kind of wall or something to stop that from going into the basement, because it's all going to just fill us with.
Right, right, so I think that's why we kind of decided we'd probably do some kind of split down in there. I mean, I'm not sure exactly, because we didn't design it, but yeah, we're aware of the fact that it's not.
Do you need to look at any of the measures?
Well, there was all kinds of ice and snow on top of it the day that I was here, but I know about how big it is, and that's kind of why I threw some dollars in there. I think we'll be fine, it's just a matter of, we'll have to figure out after what we need to accommodate your brother as well, so I'm not overly concerned about this. But thanks for that. Then the other thing I have for you is Shady Lane. It's basically just a recap of where we're at before. There was a $1,000 commitment from the village the last time we were out, and then there was a $1,000 commitment from the chamber. I don't know where, you know, if you can still count on the chamber, if it was out there. We had put that in there towards playground installation. That's something we could obviously remove if you so choose. We can take, we can put the $1,000 towards the project and not even do the playground installation. Part of the purpose behind the chamber donation, if you remember, was the fact that the more places we get money, you know, the more points you score, because you're using that many more sources. I used the Washington Street reconstruction, which we have, should have a commitment on, which I do need to talk to you about that a little bit during the minute. So basically, at the bottom of that, it basically turns out to be a $732,000 project altogether, with Shady Lane, Washington Street, and then East Main. And then I also attached a resolution through your pass, which would budget for $1,000 if you so choose. If not, we can pass something else, and I'll work out a different resolution, maybe they'll want you passed, and then we'll get, we'll define, and then they'll even tell you. So I guess, any questions or comments about that? I will tell you.
Definitely a two to three-phase project for $732,000.
Yeah.
And the chances of getting two or three out of state is pretty high.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody's aware, but there has been kind of a pledge in the state budget, which came my attention about, we could go through some emails through the higher municipal league, and apparently, the skip funding part of the issue two arm has been left out. The LTIP money, which comes from gas tax, it's in the ODOT budget, and the LTIP money and the skip money, which is skip in the state capital improvement program, and that money, it comes from bonds that are sold by the state, the LTIP money comes from gas tax, and those two amounts together kind of create the issue two program. If you've ever been to any of the scoring, if you remember, there's always like, if you have a street project, there's always a little extra scoring thing there, if you have a safety hazard or whatever, that's because it goes with that LTIP money. Well, the skip money has been left out of the budget, and so there's a mad dash going on over at the state to try to get this corrected, because if it's not, it could delay funding of skip projects for eight years. I have talked to these someone's about it, I got an email from him this morning that said that he had a meeting with the county engineers from the counties that's in ODOT District Eight, which is, you know, town of Lebanon, and that Bob Geyer from Green County indicated that one of the state, his state reps had called him to let him know that the skip funding was inadvertently left out. There's shirmer's going around that the state's doing this on purpose behind everybody's back, that they don't want anybody to know, so there's a lot of shirmer's going on, and he basically said that Bob Geyer assured him that it was going to be included in amendment. It's not in the original ODOT budget, I haven't looked at it. Then his comment was, we need to keep a close eye on this, I will talk to Jim E.P. and Mr. Faber, which are the House and Senate representatives about this, and then he made the kind of, too good of a program to stop funding this. So, you know, this could affect the Washington Street project if something happens, so it's really important that the legislators know what's going on. I know the city of Dayton is sending letters, there was some information that came out of their district, which is District Four of Issue Two, where they were rallying to try to get information to legislators about what's going on, so that, you know, this isn't missed. So I just want you to know, there is kind of some things going on with that. Again, I try to stay on top of it as much as I can, but if, you know, anybody, you have any contact with any of the legislature, you know, I think it's important that they realize how this is going to affect the small communities, because without this kind of one, you guys can't do projects. I mean, you don't have enough local government funds to even begin to think about it. Now, the CBPG program is also kind of on the federal chopping block. I was at a meeting in Indianapolis, CBPG meeting today, they're saying that the House wants 62% of the CBPG program cut. They think it's probably going to be around 13%, which obviously is going to trickle down. For as small as the formula program is becoming, I can see that one maybe going away, just because you can do so little with, you know, this little $30,000 grant sometimes, and I don't know how it's going to affect it, whether they'll just make the pot smaller, or whether they'll kind of revamp the program, I don't know, but, you know, that's another thing that's kind of stirring around in this federal budget that hasn't been patched yet. I have further information of some things that are going on, so if you see legislators, you know, anywhere, you know, you need to let them know how important this is, you know, for the small communities.
I'm sure they're here all.
I would think, yeah, because this all started well over a week ago, and then I initially put out a big thing about it, and they even gave everybody like a sample letter to like send to everybody. So, I mean, I'm sure that there's talk going on over there, I just, you know, hopefully it's allowed a little noise that, you know, people recognize that they're how important this is. So, anyway, I just wanted. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring up to date on that, just so that you're aware of it and aware that, you know, there's people trying to do things. I wanted to try and get all of these things, he was a big player, you know, being a county engineer, plus the head of the district down there, I felt like, you know, he's got some contacts, but, you know, obviously, we don't have, and I don't have, but, you know, we can be, call more people and then write emails, so. Okay? All right, so I guess, what questions do we have about the projects? And where you wanna redo that? If you do have resolutions, if you want it the way they are, if you wanna do something different, we can pass them how you want, and we can redo the resolutions for you. And that's kinda difficult without changing.
Yeah. Somebody blew up that decision number, did.
We had 27, too, I believe, this is last year's application. We're looking at doing other things on Main Street. This would not be completed until 2012, so, we kinda like, you know, staying kinda along the same lines as we covered the works. We had 27, too, yeah, somewhat, that may come in or out of the building. I mean, if you wanna try to shorten the project somewhat, I mean, we can try to do something, you know, do one side, make it a smaller project, so you couldn't lose money, that's an option. We went down, that want the far east end there by High Street, we're not replacing any of that sidewalk, it was all relatively new, and it just felt like it wasn't worth, you know, tearing up something that was relatively new to put in new when there's quite, quite such a tight budget. You know, we've got a big apron there at Reeves Garage to deal with, plus we've got all that concrete that comes all the way up to the curb on that side as well, all the way down past this building. There's just a lot of concrete there, and I think you can kinda see that in the fact that, you know, $24,000 or almost, you know, more than a third is just a sidewalk.
We're ready for ordinance, oh, 2011-02.
Hey, you're on the mall, good for you.
And we have two ordinances, so we're ready for.
This has to be in a little single.
April 1st, April 1st, Friday, Friday. So, that, basically, this be four.
Hold both of them.
The votes here is the same.
On Main Street, it really doesn't need to be addressed, there's all that concrete.
Absolutely.
The trip hazards and everything else, it's all it's gotta be done. I just sense.
Anything else, counsel? Is there any thought given to reduce some of the width of the sidewalk, or put the strip of grass in, or does it all have to be hungry?
I guess, basically, no, it wouldn't have to be, I think it was just more the downtown area, it's pretty typical. You've got the antique shop there, there was one little area where we were gonna take the grass strip out and put concrete, just because people are getting out of their cars, and we watched people that day. They got out of their cars, had to walk across the grass, it was snug, it was in the grass to get to the sidewalk, you know, to go into the antique store. The other side, it's basically concrete all the way out to the curb down past Reeves. Basically, we have 2,600, or we had 2,600 square feet of sidewalk in the other, other project, and now, we're looking at 4900 square feet. But, I mean, that's really what the cost is for all that sidewalk.
Across the street, though, by Loises and Bonny's and all those, that's curved, that's from the curb to the whole way out. Yeah, so, it would just match that, basically.
I'm not exactly sure where you're talking about.
Watched this, watched it, we took it all the way out. We took all that out, that's all curved, go ahead, it's like a curved sidewalk, it's curved.
We took it from building to curb.
Yes, we did, and it would be kind of the same thing, except, once you get past Reeves, there's a section of sidewalk down there that would still have the grass strip down to.
Where the houses are.
Yeah. And then, the houses, couple houses on their side, we could leave that sidewalk, just because we felt like it was in a nice shape, and we can match up to it and try and save some dollars.
Actually, across the street's the same way, too. Over by God Reeves and that area, that's what she said.
Yeah, it's all the way out.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
Maybe it's called selective.
So, there, I got $2,000 for that.
Teenager, right?
Yeah.
So, we move ahead with the Main Street project?
Yeah, I think we should.
So, we need a motion for the resolution? I make a motion, it's the resolution number 2011-32.
Those are three?
2001, is it? 2011, what?
Which one'd you pick up first?
Say it's two, two project.
Our number two, two are ordinance, it's one resolution, so it's resolution of two.
Call Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Borum?
Yes.
Rick Benlin?
Yes.
Dallas Aver?
Yes.
Earl Moll?
Yes.
G D Davis?
Yes.
Should I have a hearing to just make the thought? I need to, I need to do a, 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 a,
And this other one, Susan, we can adopt, but we can, just to keep us in the loop, right?
Yeah, we listen to an application on the first, but we, I only have $1,000, and they-
Right.
I don't think there's any, I mean, you've got enough others.
Right.
I don't know if I can get a pocket chamber, whether that's something you think we can handle, and I mean, that's something I can take out if we need to, not when somebody has, you have so many permissions for that.
I'm the president, boy.
Hey, here we go. There we are.
See there, he just said, yes, I heard him. We committed, we committed the funds, you know, except for you, what you do with it.
Hey, Susan.
Five-on-five for the letter from the Chamber that we could put a grant application that said you commit $5,000, you should have looked at this project, that was in.
On this Shady Lane project up there, are we gonna be able to put that in as this?
We're gonna do what?
Totally mount as this, or we're gonna break that project down?
It's gonna be a two, three-year project, it's really bad.
If we don't do it through this, we'll have to break it up. Because it's just, and I'm not sure, it's still gonna be really hard to even work it up, just because of the kind of project that, we might be able to go up there and like, do the storm sewer as one of the veins, and then, you know, maybe do part of the curb and gutter, and then, another part of the curb and gutter, I mean, I just-
I just don't see them letting us have enough money, they won't. Or, us having the matching funds.
This is what keeps us in the loop for the last.
They keep us in the loop.
Once you're out of loop, you're out of loop, so you gotta keep your project in the loop, so it works.
And that's pretty much what we're doing.
I mean, they only have $300,000 grant each time, so, you know, you're talking, you know, twice the amount, those two have, could have third of the times the money, so, you can say it's gonna be a three, three-phase project, even if you're lucky enough to get in your fight with everybody in the state, so, you know.
The other thing is, it doesn't really fit the High Public Works Commission for them, because the traffic's just not fair.
It's a wish list to keep us in the loop.
You know, so.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2011-3.
I'll read that first.
Oh. I read the last one after I have made the motion.
I did, I said that, either. Resolution number 2011-3, resolution to apply for a CDVG grant through the Provo County Ohio Commissioners for the project entitled Shady Lane Neighborhood Improvements, and the budgeting of at least $1,000 in matching funds from the Village of New Paris, street and general funds for the County Year of 2012. Now, whereas a CDVG grant is potentially available through the Office of the Provo County Ohio Commissioners for the street reconstruction and storm sewer improvements, and whereas at least $1,000 of matching funds may be required from the Village of New Paris to receive said grant, now, therefore, be resolved by the Council of the Village of New Paris, Provo County, Ohio, as follows. Section One, applications for a grant through the Provo County Ohio Commissioners for a street reconstruction and storm sewer improvement project in Shady Lane Neighborhood in the Village of New Paris, Ohio, is hereby authorized and is consented to the mayor to sign all documents necessary on behalf of the Village to carry out said application. Section Two, that at least $1,000 of matching funds from the Village of New Paris, Ohio, are hereby authorized to be budgeted for the County Year of 2012 from the street and general funds in order to assist in the improvement. Section Three, King Engineering Group Incorporated is hereby authorized to assist the Village in its application process. Section Four, the resolution shall be effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Not even a motion to accept resolution 2011-3.
I make a motion to accept resolution number 2011-3.
Second.
Call Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Borum?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Dallas Sabre?
Yes.
Earl Moll?
Yes.
Jeanie Davis?
Yes.
And now, I need a motion to wait and pre-read your rule and accept this emergency?
So, move it.
Say it. Jeanie Davis?
Yes.
Earl Moll?
Yes.
Dallas Sabre?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
So.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take you with me, and I'm gonna get ahold of James, and then, bring you back, and have you on, and that way, you can like, Mr. Lake lost, but that's okay.
That's a real good idea, I think.
Anything else, Susan?
That's all I have, unless she makes up anything.
Anybody, anybody have any questions for Susan?
You know, I'm not gonna like, go out the back door, 'cause I have another meeting to give.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Tell them to go to get me home.
Okay. Thank you. Committee of Lords, Safety, Chief?
The City Department handles safety calls for service in February. We took 22 reports and then four rest, given important citations, three central warnings, and one time with three vehicles. And the only thing I want to bring to your attention is the total spending this year, of course, of $3.00, you spent $1,582.39 of our $7,000 here this year already, that's 22%. It was possible to kill us this year. We've got some downplaying ahead, and then, the other paper we have there is our 2010 year summary for, you know, some figures on what we did last year, I'll do all of that, but, just a few things I want to bring up. Calls for service, we handled 1,222 calls for service last year. Business checks, every night, after dark, the office in the evenings, and they go out to check every business in town. We checked 14,382 businesses last year. It's actually, they didn't have a car going up, and, you know, checking doors, make sure they're locked, hooking around, make sure the windows aren't broken out, and stuff like that. And then, the only other thing I want to bring to your attention right now is you drove 24,146 miles last year out of the hood. Three things there that are kind of, you know, show you that you're out doing stuff, and, you know, we're not considering the car watching traffic all the time. So, that's all we have for now.
Any questions for the Chief?
You gonna incorporate deer dead next year? I mean-
Well, we don't like that. One of them is in the dirt.
You don't remember doing it? Yeah, that'd be nice. Okay. Thanks, Hugh. Building Committee? I don't have anything, Joe. Streets, Rick? Nothing other than others, people, I mean, the Washington Street, if they're where they dug the, where they had the water break, you know, we fill it, but as fast as we fill it, it washes out. Until the asphalt plant opens up, we're gonna deal with that. And the reason, Mr. Carlotti, the reason we didn't plate that, because with the snow still coming, we were afraid if we put a plate there, the state could do with their plow, which they do, as a main road, it hit it, it could hit up in somebody's living rooms, so, that's the reason we had to deal with the gravel until we can make other arrangements until the asphalt plant opens up, so we'll just continue building the gravel, but unfortunately, it disappears as fast as we put it in there, so, other than that, I'm not aware of too many other things, other than some rises I gotta take a look at on Main Streets.
We got a situation taken care of down in front of the telephone?
Yes.
That's all, then, taken care of, and, no more problems there? The Chief said?
Uh, yeah.
I have a report going out on Shady Lane, I'll get the number off the-
Melody Lane.
Huh?
Melody Lane. Oh, Shady, you said Shady Lane. One on Shady Lane?
Melody.
Melody Lane.
I'll get the number off that ten, subject to-
Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Rick?
I'm not gonna waste time.
Okay. Sanitation, Mary Jane?
Um, I've sent out a letter, the place still isn't cleaned up yet. It's partially clean. There's mattresses out, it's just junky. I want to know if you want Billy to clean that mess up and take it to the dump, or you want someone hired to do that?
Yes, I will email to you.
Rick?
We got time, we got a place for, we able to do that?
I hate getting in the habit of Billy being the-
I thought that's part of why he was hired, I mean, hired, he said he would do it.
How much stuff you talking about? A lot?
Yeah. Well, how's he clean?
You wanna see a picture of it?
I have, I know.
Is that what you're talking about, that across from?
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
I saw a picture of him.
All kinds of stuff. Where were we talking?
Eagle Edition, 406 Eagle Edition. Can you have Billy do it and charge him for it?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, that's what we usually do. I mean, I know when we hired Billy, he said he would do cleanup, too, and that's what we hired him.
He probably has enough time to do it.
I know he doesn't really wanna do it, but I know that's what we hired, pardon me, the street guy do, so.
And you, we get reimbursed by assessing your taxes for that thing?
Yeah.
For his time, and WPs and everything else?
Yeah.
Sure.
And I'm gonna rewrite the ordinance and raise that up, you know.
Yes. Okay.
Because it's always the same landlord, and he just ignores everything, so.
Because he knows we're gonna go into it for it.
Well, no, not necessarily. That's okay, but maybe he don't know that his taxes are being assessed, but it's in the letter, and he's told that. I don't care, it just needs to be cleaned up.
Okay, we'll do this.
Do you need a motion for that?
No.
No.
Anything else, Mary Jane, Jeanie?
I have several other places I have to take care of.
Okay. Planning Commission, no. VPA, no. Resolution Ordinance, no. Old Business Insurance Loss Prevention. I'm not real sure about this.
That's, that's only-
You know what she's talking about?
Yeah, I do, there's nothing that this time, I don't know.
Okay.
Oh, and your old business, when you finished, I have something on them. Surveys.
Okay, go ahead.
The surveys will start, be on the 12th and the 19th, and the honorary society class at National Trail will be doing those, along with the teacher supervisor and myself, and Jeanie, she wants to help.
Okay, so, you're gonna go ahead and still do it?
Yeah, we're gonna get it done, yeah.
Okay.
So, we can have it done before the first day.
When are you gonna do that?
All righty.
The 12th, both Saturdays.
Okay, thank you.
March. March.
Anything else?
By the first of April.
Our next meeting's April 4th, 2011, at 7:10. Anything else? Any motion to adjourn?
So, make it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Borum?
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle?
Yes.
Dallas Sabre?
Yes.